welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Welcome to the July 15th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us this morning and of course, we like to make sure that you know about the important things going on around Sedgwick County. And commissioners, it is budget season and we've kind of had a little shuffling of dates as to what we've been advertising through most of the year. We have put a billboard on the front page of our website that lets folks know that we will have the recommended budget presented on Monday, the 20th at 9:00 a.m. Our first public hearing remains July 29th at 9:00 a.m. The second will be Thursday, August 6th at 6:00 p.m. And then our final adoption will be August 12th at 9:00 a.m. And of course, you can find those dates again on our website. Those meetings will all be held here in this room or a little overflow if we need that. But busy time, busy summer and lots of things going on. Commissioners, we do know and you have seen and if you've been out and about, it is really, really hot, has been hot, continues to be hot, it's that time. So I thought, okay, we have to think about how we all stay a little cool. And so, I wanted to remind you, this is what we're looking at. We don't see any hundreds right yet, but this is what we're looking at for the next five days. There is a 10-day, kind of goes out, still stays in the 90s. But you see, over the weekend, looks like we're going to be 99 or 98. And so the question I have for each one of you is, oh, nope, how do you cool down? And so we want folks out there to know a little bit about the county commissioners. What do you grab as your choice to cool down? And I have iced tea, ice cold lemonade, ice cream, and we want people to know what kind of ice cream you like. And there really was a number four, but Commissioner Ransaw, because it's a family hour, I didn't put the ice cold beer.
Okay.
Because it's family hour. But anyway, so Commissioner Norton, which of those do you grab for and what cools you down?
Well, I'm a southern boy, so you could probably guess that it's sweet tea.
Sweet tea, okay. Couple glasses?
Well, until I'm refreshed and cooled off.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Peter John, tell the folks out there, what do you do to cool down?
I'm kind of a different number four. I talked to one of my kids and we head for the pool.
Oh, that's, that's full cooldown.
Full body immersion works best.
Okay, all right, very good. We're going to skip you for just a minute. We like to use you last. Commissioner Howell?
Well, actually, I do drink large amounts of tea when it gets really hot and really enjoy that, gallons and gallons worth, but usually if I have my favorite, there would certainly be ice cream and I'll say anything chocolate would be my favorite.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Unruh?
Well, when I'm heated up, I'm, I'm ready to try any of them. I mean, they all sound good to me right now and I do like vanilla ice cream best.
Okay.
And so I won't choose one, I'd say anyone, I'm easy to get along with.
Okay, nothing better than homemade vanilla ice cream either. That's just...
Ah, that's the best there is.
That's yum. All right, Commissioner Ransaw, bring it in for us. Be the leader, tell us what, tell us what you have.
No drama here, but I go with iced tea.
Okay.
Is that Long Island tea? I've heard of...
That's a different kind of tea, I think.
I don't know what it is, I just have heard of it.
Well, not now, but I do have a story about that I can tell you sometime, so...
Family hour, right? Family hour. All right, well, we remind everybody to take it easy, find the shade, cool down as best you can and let's remember, we have a pretty short agenda, the commissioners, this morning. We have a couple of appointments to serve on boards, folks that you have appointed. We'll have a grant for aging service and I think David has a renewal of Adopt a Highway, so important business. We're glad to have you back, Chairman Ransaw. We missed you last week, but Commissioner Peter John did a great job. Got us out of here on time.
The county survived despite my visit.
Well, thank you very much. It's good to be back, but we did spend a week in Colorado doing whitewater rafting. It was about 60s to low 70s there, it was beautiful weather and enjoyed the vacation, but it was good to be home. With that, we'll call Board of Regular Meeting of Sedgwick County, Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for July 15, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Dave Fulton, St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Shall we pray? O Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. We live in this moment, Holy One, this moment that you create. In this moment, we recognize your presence and your sovereignty over all of life. We thank you, O Holy One, for this life, for this gathering, for this small corner of creation we call home, our Sedgwick County, home on the range. Holy One, accompany our county commission as they do the work of the people this day. Grant them wisdom as they undertake decisions on behalf of all the citizens whom they represent. Let the discussions be guided by clear thought with the end of public good always in mind. We thank you, Lord, for all that, who in this county are committed to public service, those in law enforcement, comm care, public health, corrections, the courts, and all who serve the citizens of our county. We thank you for the freedom to pray in this place, in the name of all that we hold sacred. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw.
Present. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of May 20th, 2015.
Ministers, do you have the meeting minutes before you? What's the will of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes, May 20th, 2015.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution reappointing Mario Goico to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Papoun, Acting County Counselor. This resolution before you today is for the reappointment by Commissioner Peter John, Mario, Representative Mario Goico, to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. The resolution's in proper form and would ask that you approve the resolution.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Mario Goico to the Sedgwick County Advisory Committee Council on Aging and I'll have some other comments after we dispose of that motion.
Second time. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see Mr. Goico here in the audience this morning, but I very much appreciate his service in the past and his willing to serve in going into the future and, and appreciate, appreciate his efforts in this area. Thank you.
We'll get him sworn in at a different time. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution renominating Ron Ryan for reappointment to the Wichita City Council as a member of the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, Acting County Counselor. This is the renomination of Ron Ryan by Commissioner Unruh for appointment to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board. Of course, we nominate members to this, to the city council and they actually make the appointment and this will be a reappointment of Mr. Ryan. Resolution's in proper form and request that you adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Is Mr. Ryan here today?
No, he's not.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, consideration of a grant in the amount of $2,873,745 for the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services, fiscal year 2016 area plan.
Can you see me down here? All right. Annette decided that she needed to get stranded in Chicago, so I'm here on her behalf for Sedgwick County Department on Aging and the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging. What I'm here today is to, to talk about our plan for funding with the Older Americans Act. This is funding that is allocated to the state and then the state allocates it to one of the 11 area agencies on aging. It's based on funding formula. We have been receiving this funding for the last 35 years. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous, so I didn't introduce myself. My name's Craig Purback and I'm with the Department on Aging. I work on the mill levy mobility and housing programs. And so Annette asked me to come here on her behalf. She really wanted this to go ahead and get presented today as opposed to postponing. The Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services requires that each year, that the area agencies on aging update and revise their area plan. The area plan we're working on now is a four-year plan for 2014 through 2017. We're in year 2016. So it begins October 1st and ends September 30th of 2016. The Central Plains Area Agency on Aging identifies in this plan what community needs are and makes any revisions as appropriate each year annually. And then we indicate how we will be spending those federal fundings for our planning and service area. And that service area is Butler, Harvey and Sedgwick Counties. Under the Older Americans Act or OAA, the money is divided up into titles and each title is allocated by the state to determine how much of the total federal dollars can go for each program. Also included in the area plans are some state dollars for the nutrition programs. So this has been reviewed by our Central Plains Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. It has also been reviewed and approved by Butler and Harvey Boards of County Commissioners, which have authorized the Sedgwick County Chair to sign off on this. The plan includes Title 3B, which is Support in Community Services, which is a total of 400,046, I've lost my ability to speak, $468,000. And Title 3C, which is Nutrition, that is broken down into the Congregate Meal Programs with federal dollars of 723,000, state dollars 23,000. I'm not doing the cents in there, so I'm just rounding up. This funds that come through the USDA, we also get National Service Incentive Program funding and these funds come through USDA for the Congregate Meals. Title 3C is, Title 3C II is Nutrition and Home Delivered. In that, we get federal dollars in around 372,000, state dollars, I'm trying to see here if I have the right numbers on the state dollars. State dollars, we receive $785,000 and then in that program, we also get the Nutrition Service Incentive Program dollars of 161,000. These are planning figures. That's because the federal budget has not been finalized yet, so all of our providers have been informed that these are planning dollars, so things will change as budget issues change. Also, we have a required match through Sedgwick County of 65, 911. We have providers in the other two counties that also provide match amounts into this and that amount has already been approved in last year's budget and for this year by the county. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. Just want to double check on a couple, couple details on this request for this grant. Has the local match changed? Is it the same as last year?
Same as last year.
Or the current year, I guess we're currently in until September 30th.
Right.
Is the total amount of the grant the same as the current year too?
Let me look here on, we do have, in the budget numbers, there were potentially some slight reductions in the nutrition programs and the, let me see here, for the 3E program. But that, the issue with that is that, you know, we're, we're planning and we don't, you know, since the state and federal budget, well, the federal budget hasn't been finalized, we still have to leave some of that wiggle room in there for planning, that if budgets do change, we don't want to request less amount and then they do give us total funding, then we'd have to come back and request additional budget authority.
So are we firm with the state numbers since the...
As firm as you can be with the state numbers. They can always come back and change it. You know, our partners know if those things happen, that we'll have to come back to them and say, these are the new numbers. How are we going to work within those numbers?
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the new area plan and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Morning Commissioners. Ron Hold, Acting County Manager. You have the consent agenda items E through H. I recommend your approval.
Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item G.
Which one?
Item G.
Oh, item G, okay.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item G of the consent agenda.
Second.
I won't be supportive of this item.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'll be supportive of it. I think that Project Access is a great asset in our community and brings a lot of value to citizens who have limited access to medical care, so I'll be supportive of this and I know that this is, in certain respects, a restoration, at least in part of what was originally contemplated for our support this year, so I guess that's all the comments I have, I'm going to be supportive.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we have the opportunity to speak about the item individually, I would like to make a few comments and that is, back in January, when this item came before the commission, there was some comments that Sedgwick County had been funding Project Access with Sedgwick County Property Tax Dollars, whereas the city of Wichita, although an equal amount, was the money from a federal pass-through. And so it wasn't any, any dollars from the local, any local revenue stream. And so we, we debated that quite a bit. I think the, the reduction from Sedgwick County was $34,000. And after that, after that meeting, based on the comments made during the meeting, I think that, at least I, I had felt that I wanted to challenge the city of Wichita to, to essentially take our comments and support that with different revenue streams as we have from Sedgwick County. And they took that comment and they decided to meet that with a $25,000 increase from the city of Wichita from their own sources of revenue. However, having, having seen them do that, unfortunately, it's not a sustainable revenue source, it's a, it was from a sale of a property. And so they had a windfall and they used some of that money to fund the challenge and so unfortunately, I don't know what their plans are going forward, but I guess I want to be clear that we need to wean this program off of, off of Sedgwick County Property Tax Dollars. And I think this is a, a motion that I will support today, but I, I guess I see a caution in the future and that is that if we've, you know, Wichita has used grant, grant dollars as well as Sedgwick County has used property tax dollars to fund this, ideally, we would see, I think, an equal share that comes from similar sources. And so I know it's our intention to apply for a grant for our funding, for funding for next year and we don't know, of course, if that's going to be approved or not, but we'll see what happens with that. But in the meantime, since we're going through a budget cycle, I guess I would like to let Wichita know that it's my hope that they would, if they, if they want to continue to, to understand the comment that was made during the January meeting, that they would provide funding for their 2016 budget that comes from local revenue sources and not just pass-through dollars from the federal government. So having said that, I will support this motion today, but I do see a challenge moving forward on how this plays out for the, for the fiscal 16 budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This issue's come up previously and I do support the idea of trying to get the comments of Commissioner from the 5th District in terms of trying to see if we can come up with a, a funding source that, that doesn't tie us in on the, on the property tax side. And I'm, I'm not going to be supporting this motion today because we're struggling with a whole host of fiscal issues and one, I think that's going to become more apparent as time goes on and I, the increase in spending today, I'm not, I think we'd be better off in leaving where we are, but having said that, it's, it's a close call. I would, I would like to, you know, I struggle with where is the optimal amount of funding in this type of area and this type of program because there are so many entities, both private and public, that are involved here and, and as, as Commissioner Howell did point out, we, we do have different funding sources that are coming in and different governmental bodies doing it too. So that's, that's my thoughts on that issue today. Thank you.
Commissioner Norton?
I'm going to be supportive today, I'll be supportive in the future. I have been supportive in the past. My history with Project Access goes back 15, 16 years in the early days when they were working on putting together the system. I think when we talk about cost benefit ratio, common good for the people, public-private partnerships, the health of the community, I don't think there's a better system or product out there than what has been developed through the Medical Society and the partnership with United Way, the city and the county, to put together and parlay to huge amounts of, of care from the medical community. Last I, I knew it was between 600 and 700 doctors that participate, pharmacies, hospitals. We put some money into the administration and some pharmaceuticals, but the truth is, the last number I had was well in over $100 million of care given by the Medical Society, donated care from these doctors. And I don't know how you make that kind of impact in a community without a baseline foundation which we've participated in. So I'm going to continue to be supportive, not only today, but in the future of Project Access. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would have a question for the manager about this funding. The funding for the original request was included in the 2015 budget. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that original amount was, what, 208 or 209,000?
Just north of 200,000. I don't remember the exact number.
Okay, so it, it was contemplated that we would support this and it's, it's not an extra burden on this year's budget?
This, that's right. This 25,000 would, would be, if you will, part of that 34,000, I believe Commissioner Howell referenced.
Okay, and then could I just get a clarification maybe from Ms. Nelson who's here today? Mr. Chairman, is it...
I'll be fine. Just give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Ann Nelson. I live at 1512 Horizon Drive in Derby. I'm the Executive Director of Central Plains Healthcare Partnership.
Well, thank, thank you for being here. I just had a question. Commissioner Norton referenced the value of the leverage benefit to our community that we receive and I think in various conversations, I've been way undershooting the value. So could you just tell me, in, in your calculation, what is the approximate leverage we get out of this money?
Each year, your contribution leverages about $15 million in donated medical care by about 630 physicians, our hospital systems, 13 dentists, hospice care, physical therapists, all, all the providers that participate in the program. Over the 16 years that we've operated, we've enrolled 12,623 patients and leveraged $175 million in donated care.
$175?
Seventy-five million, yes.
Okay, well, I've been, I haven't been seeing that number and I'm embarrassed to tell you the number I've been using, but it's way less than that, so I'm, I'm glad to have that.
It goes up every day.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
So ahead, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ann. Certainly, there's no question that this is a good program. The question is whether or not, or where the funding for this should come from. As you know, there are hundreds, not thousands, of nonprofits out there that do fantastic work and the vast majority of them have to raise money, you know, for their operations and I just personally believe the Project Access is no different in that regard and that should be the better out, particularly, particularly considering the new normal, we have to, we have to look at our budget and some of these things that could be private, that'll be funded by private dollars, can and should be done that way. It's not, not a reflection of the quality of the program or how important it is, it's just a difference of opinion of where the funding should come from. Commissioner Peter John?
I'm in agreement with your remarks, thank you.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
No.
Chairman Ransaw.
No. That finishes up the consent agenda. That item passes 3 to 2, correct? Next, we have legislative issues, which, Mr. Manager, I don't believe we have anything.
No, sir.
Then we have other commissioners, is there anything for the other portion of I have something I want to address. While I was gone, the city took an action with respect to the Board of Zoning Appeals about a week ago and there was something in the paper about that issue. I want to clarify, one of this, under the now considered this section of their local paper on July, I think it was July the 8th, they said that it, it should stun the citizens that even though city and county leaders meet often, the county failed to mention to the city that they wanted to split the boards. Now, that would be stunning unless, of course, you knew the facts of the situation. So let me clarify a few things here. First of all, Sedgwick County initiated this whole process back in February and city staff in the pl-... city staff in the planning department and the legal department were aware of that way back then. We took action to split those boards on April first of this year, prior to any election for the new mayor or city council people. Our first meeting with the mayor and vice mayor was in May and June. So from the point of view of the county, it made no sense to bring up an issue that had already taken place, and that presumably they already knew about because staff knew about it. So if city council wasn't aware of this, then that is troubling, because that means staff didn't inform them. And I'm sure the mayor will address that issue as we go forward. But certainly, there was no need to talk about things that had already happened. I mean, this actually took effect July first. So that's the facts of the situation, and now that everybody knows the facts, I'm sure it won't be so stunning as what it first seems. With that, I believe we have need for an executive session. Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for twenty minutes to consider personnel matters, non-elected personnel, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than nine fifty a.m.
I'll second that. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransough?
Aye. Then I'll move to executive session.
Hey! Ah, ah, ah! Ah! 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 Hey! Ah, ah, ah! Ah![1588.88] Ah, 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 damn it, girl! Ah! Hey! 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 Ah, 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 damn it, girl! Ah!